And we're here for the purposes of interviewing our two remaining candidates for the position of city manager. And our first candidate is going to be Rick Getcho. Is it Getcho or Getsko?
Getcho.
Getcho, okay. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank you for participating in this whole long extended interview process. I know it's gone on for quite some time, but we're very glad to have you here.
Well, thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Okay. Greg? Where is Greg? Oh, there you are.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to ask the candidates to be to the point on their questions. Give as many examples as you can. If you get off track, I will interrupt and say we need to get back on point. The process will be the council will each take a turn asking you questions, starting with the mayor and alternating alphabetically and male council member, female council member, to balance off our questions. And then after that point, they will give you an opportunity to ask questions for about five minutes to the council, things that you may want to know, that you haven't found out. And then at the end, seven minutes to give a presentation on why you feel you're uniquely qualified to be the next city manager for City of Eden Prairie. So, thank you for being here today, Rick. We look forward to hearing from you. And Mayor, why don't you start us off with first round of questions?
Okay, thank you. I know that you're going to later tell us about why you think you'd be the best candidate or are the best candidate for this position, but I'd like to start off with asking you why you're specifically interested in this position and why, after being in Hopkins for six years, you're interested in moving on to Eden Prairie.
Thank you. Eden Prairie is known throughout the metro as an excellent community with quality city services. So, it's one of those communities. From speaking with the previous city manager, is an excellent place to work and to live. And also, I think it's reflected just recently, you received some results from your Quality of Life survey. And our community does that same type of survey. And it shows that not only you are ranked number one through the Money Magazine, but also through what the residents feel through a Quality of Life survey and how highly they value the city and what the city has to offer. And I think that type of draw for me and what I think my skill set would fit well in City of Eden Prairie.
All right, thank you. And then also maybe address the issue of why leaving Hopkins after six years? How you see this in terms of your career?
In terms of my career, I've worked in three different communities in the last 15 years. And I've progressed from smaller communities to larger communities. And I've had an excellent chance to really get to know city government and be involved and be engaged. And I see that Eden Prairie is a logical next step. But at the same time, in terms of where I am in Hopkins, I enjoy my job there. It's going very well. I'm very pleased with my position there. And there really are only probably just a very small handful of cities that would attract me to leave Hopkins. And again, I think Eden Prairie may be one of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho.
Okay, Rick. Why don't you share with us your greatest learning experience from being a city manager? And what was the situation and what did you do? And basically, how did you handle it?
I think pretty early on, I came straight out of school into this field at a pretty young age. Not 15 years old, as some people might want to think, but I was actually, I was born in the 1960s, so let's set that aside. That's come up before. But I dealt with situations where, in working in small communities, where I was challenged right off the bat. You're coming into this city pretty young, pretty new, and in terms of the staff and some of the council members, how are you to tell me how to better operate the city? So, I learned pretty quickly that I had to know what I was doing, to know my stuff and be one who can engage employees and engage people and work with them for what the best shared outcome is. Maybe a recent example from two jobs ago would be a discussion that we had in our community about organized waste collection. And that was a project that I was in charge of in terms of having a conversation about having one waste hauler in the community as opposed to, under contract, as opposed to several different waste haulers on many days of the week. And I learned pretty quickly in that particular instance that the choice that you have, the freedom of choice in terms of who your garbage hauler is outweighs several other issues. So, we were able to work through a lot of issues and a lot of concerns and came to some consensus where maybe in Lauderdale in that instance, we didn't have one hauler with one contract. We were able to limit it to one day of the week. And so, there's a lot of those issues where you need to convene a conversation, work with residents, council members and others, bringing people together and partnering.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
When discussing complex topics with people, how often do they have difficulty understanding your train of thought? And how do you know that they've lost track of your meaning? And how do you get them back on the same page so that they are understanding?
There's a lot of times where we're dealing with complex budget issues, projects, redevelopment projects. And so, I work a lot and spend a lot of time with how the different audiences that you work with will receive that information. And so, one of the ways is asking. Is this something that you're understanding? Does this work? Is there another track that we want to take in terms of how the information's being communicated? I think I'm pretty good at reading nonverbal language in terms of, you know, how you're following a certain topic. But I'm pretty upfront and direct. And I'll ask, is this, is this working? Is this a topic? Is there another way that we can, we can do this? Our Citizen Academy in Hopkins is one in which we spend a lot of time providing information to residents on programs. And we ask in surveys and feedback indirectly, is this hitting what you want? Are you hearing what is important to you? So, you can survey someone, you can ask directly in the course of a conversation, you can get a feel for how that's being received.
Can you give a specific example, though, Rick, of a situation, a complex situation that you had to explain to somebody, either your staff or the citizens?
Yeah.
Maybe with the budget, that might be a good one to start with, or redevelopment issue?
Yeah, budget's a great issue. You know, we're dealing with a kind of a difficult situation the last few years in setting our budget. And so, we're talking about how you want to be able to, you know, keep your tax rate somewhat flat at the same time that your levy may increase, at the same time you're trying to keep the level of services at a certain point. So, there's a lot of different information that you want to provide and break down so people understand the services that they get for what they pay for. So, we do that not only in the truth and taxation setting, in a Citizen Academy setting. There's a lot of time spent, and even with employees, employees too, having different meetings, talking about what the budget's about, what are the facets, what does it mean and what goes into that.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Hi, Rick. Now that you've had a chance to get familiar with both Eden Prairie as a city and our local government in specific, are there any ideas or what ideas are you excited about bringing into the job that would improve our ability to deliver services?
That's a really good question because a lot of what we've worked on in Hopkins and I've worked on in my career in terms of innovation, citizen engagement, employee engagement, is done here. I think that there's a lot of really good work done at Eden Prairie. And Eden Prairie's a leader in a lot of those different areas. That's again why I see that I could fit in. But I also think that there may be opportunities in Eden Prairie for more conversations and more discussions with the community about different issues. In our community, we used our Decision Resources survey to kind of frame what our strategic plan should be for our community. So, taking out of that, some of the pieces that we think where we should go. And I think, again, the recent example of having a survey here may lead to a discussion of budget, maybe one, services, a strategic plan. I think those are things that I could bring to the community. Again, in a community that feels that it is well-connected to its council and the leadership. But I think there's more collaboration, more discussion, more work that can be done in that area.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wickston?
Hi, Rick.
Hi.
You have had experiences as a city manager in a couple of other cities. My question for you is what kind of experiences have you had involving multiple projects? Multiple projects? And then another part of the question is, how do you prefer to cope with the stress of such a situation? When you've got multiple things that you're trying to do at the same time, how do you handle the stress from that?
In the situation that I'm in now in Hopkins, there are multiple projects. There are multiple projects related to employee development, redevelopment in the community, budgeting issues, financial issues, just a lot of plethora of issues. So, I think how it works for me is to prioritize and to understand with working with the city council and with the city staff, what comes first, what needs to happen now, what can wait. I'm a manager who delegates and expects quite a bit out of the city staff. So, there are clear expectations set on having a really good team where we can all work together and there's not a feeling, we talked about me and my stress. Well, when you have really good people that you work with and you work really well as a team, there's a little bit of less stress on any one individual when we're all in this together. And that goes with the staff and the city council and, to some extent, even residents. We have a pretty engaged resident community. And so, they can provide a lot of help. But again, it's working as a team, it's working together and prioritizing. And again, our strategic plan and the goals that we set every year and then basing employee goals on those city goals allow you to have a pretty good focus on what you need to do.
If I may redirect, what do you do to handle the stress? It's a very stressful job, as we all know. A lot of pressure put on you by the press, by the public, by the demands of the position and issues that come up all the time. How do you handle the stress, Rick?
Well, there's a couple of different things. One is I'm a pretty positive person and I see the glass as half-full quite a bit. So, when you have a positive attitude, that helps with a lot of stress. The other thing I probably do is what Greg does, which is run. I run quite a bit, so that helps relieve quite a bit of stress. So, it's just, I believe in a work-life balance. And so, there are a lot of night meetings. There's a lot of times that you have to deal with work. But, you know, in this age of technology, if my daughter has a basketball game or I'm doing something with my wife, I can leave work at a reasonable hour. And if there's a few emails, I have a black barrier, I can get to emails later on. So, I think technology has helped balance work-life and putting priorities in order and knowing that I do work hard and I put a lot of time in. But I, and I do the same with the city staff, I don't want to see people at City Hall at eight o'clock at night, every night. That's not good for our health and it's not good for what we want to accomplish.
Thank you. Being that you're working in Hopkins now, we're all pretty familiar with Hopkins and we've seen it change over the years and we know that it's going through a lot of redevelopment. It probably was starting to redevelop before you got there, so you've seen the aftermath of some of those redevelopment projects. And then you've also been involved intimately with redevelopment that's occurred in the last six years there. Can you give us an example of a redevelopment situation when you used your authority to kind of influence an individual, maybe a council member, staff person or something that wasn't totally on board?
Well, you know, it's a good question because probably the largest development project that we've had recently is the Cargill Development on Excelsior and 169. And that was probably three large office buildings, Class A office, Cargill Campus that came in and has kind of been building up over the last three or four years. And there was a lot of support for that. The issue with that was the city, the council and the staff carrying out a vision of waiting as long as possible for the best possible development and not settling for something else. In that case, the example, Mayor, is not with a council, it's with a community. That's really anxious for something to happen and something to happen soon and looking at a SuperValley Warehouse that's sitting empty. And we want it to be the best possible project, so if we have to wait, we're going to wait. And we did that. But there are some redevelopment projects. We have some redevelopment projects on Main Street that we hope to see happen in the near future. And some of that's due to the stall in the economy. And having patience with, be it council members or with the community, that a package is in place to help out. And let's talk maybe about a public subsidy or a tax increment financing to where I think we've offered as much as we can offer and we need the developer to step up and having the council have patience and allowing that to occur as opposed to getting too far ahead.
How did you deal with that community impatience about the SuperValley Warehouse sitting empty?
Communicate, communicate, communicate. Our mayor and council does do an excellent job. Anything from, I can think of every national night out party we're at, council meetings, state of the city addresses, neighborhood meetings, just every different forum, it's coming, it's coming, it's a great opportunity, just wait. Just, you know, whether, you know, now, and that was '06, '07, now with the city website, our Facebook page, a weekly electronic newsletter, you know, we're pushing stuff out continually about these different projects and the status of the projects and what's going to happen. So, the more we communicate, I think the more comfortable, you know, people know where you're coming from and what we're trying to get out of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Aho?
Rick, tell us about an experience you've had in which you successfully motivated someone to become more involved with the team and how did you do that? Give us a specific example.
I think that in terms of my arrival in Hopkins, when I came to Hopkins, there was a lot that I wanted to do in terms of employee engagement. I wanted, there are a couple of ideas, and some of it was the council saying, a goal we have for you is to improve our performance management system, our performance review system for employees. And also to do more work in terms of engagement with employees and getting the temperature with the city. And the city was well-run and in a good position, but we wanted to do a little bit more in that area. Coming in and establishing an employee performance management system that involved 360-degree reviews, which didn't exist before, having other employees provide feedback on their supervisor and others, it met with some resistance and there were some issues with that. In addition to, let's institute an employee survey. Let's see what the employees think about the work environment that they work in. And you should never do an employee survey unless, A, you want the answers and B, you're going to do something about it. And so, you have to have the courage that if you're going to do it, you're going to do something about it and everyone's watching. When the information comes back, what is management going to do with that and how are they going to follow up on different issues? There was a lot of pushback, questioning, is this important? I think, looking back, it's well-received. But that type of thing, those conversations can be difficult to have if you've worked in an environment where that hadn't happened before, even though it was a relatively good situation. There wasn't anything terrible or in a very difficult place. It was just more of, just how I work as being very interactive and hands-on and that's a good fit in Hopkins.
Did that answer your question, Council?
I was going to say, how did you, so maybe, you know, it's a good example, but how did you actually, if you had maybe an individual person, how did you bring them into the team and really get, engage them to become more active in the team?
In those instances, there were a lot of one-on-one discussions and a lot of group meetings about why moving in this direction could help, you know, would help the city as a whole and help the management staff. So, there may have been some reluctance, but it was a lot of getting to what might be the obstacle and how can we overcome these obstacles? And if it's a matter of results that come back that are not positive, and again, the results come back very positive, how we're going to work with it, manage it. A lot of times, it's the fear of the unknown. So, let's work together to deal with what we know and how we can move forward together. Sometimes, I'll be honest, you just need to do certain things to see how the outcome is, even if there's some resistance. But it's important for you to come along.
Can you point to a specific example, though, Rick? I think what the council would like to hear is an example of how maybe you engaged somebody who was disengaged or somebody, without obviously giving any names or, we don't want to betray any confidences, but if you can give perhaps a real-life example of somebody that was not fully engaged in what the city was trying to do and how you were able to get them on board. Tell us a story, if you could, on that.
Okay. Yeah, in terms of maybe, there may, in situations, and I think when you talk about, you know, employees in a work situation, in that particular case where we received some information and feedback on a particular issue in a particular department, we attacked it head-on and sat down with the employee and the other people in that department and developed a work plan for that individual or that group in terms of the goals that would be acceptable in terms of performance in that department and the consequences that would come if we weren't able to move forward together. And maybe, I think, if there were not a set of expectations and goals, looking at it from the other side, I can understand why there might be disengagement or there might be consternation. But if we sit down and develop a set of goals and a plan on what specifically needs to be done, you know, you know more of what's expected of you and you'll be able to perform. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
What aspect of being a city manager is really fun for you? Every job, you know, has more than a paycheck for it. There's some reason why you're doing it. And also, what aspect of a city services or departments is closest to your own interests? And I'd sort of like you to be a little specific about both of this, you know? What is this about this job?
This job is unlike no other in that the variety, just the variety in which you deal with all different departments as a city manager. If you have the different departments of police and fire and planning and economic development and finance, communications, you get to work in all those areas. You have the fun of being involved in every piece of it from, and being in the community as well, in terms of spreading the message of the city and what happens in the community. Going to a third grade class and talking about local government and when you're talking about trying to explain what a city manager does, which is almost impossible because they know what a mayor does and maybe a city planner, but, you know, when you end the meeting with the class wanting to name your wife's, your family's third child, when they get into a discussion about, you know, well, what does a city manager do? Well, he does this. And I somehow mentioned that my wife is pregnant. She's pregnant, what? And for the next 20 minutes, we talked about what we could name our child. And I get home and two weeks later, I get something in the mail from the third grade class and they took it on as a project of all the different names that we could have for our daughter, who is now Lucy. But either way, that type of thing, when you're involved, it's great. In terms of a specific area, I think that I've been drawn to community development. And I think a lot of the work in Hopkins with the redevelopment and taking really complex issues with, you know, we're coming up on light rail now, but in addition, in a downtown, but in addition to taking a community that's in renewal and finding ways, finding dollars to clean properties up and developers and other people to create projects, that the community then becomes engaged in what type of project that is and facilitating a discussion on what, being able to think about what something might look like in 10 years and then seeing that vision come true is very rewarding. So, I just, maybe it's been the last six years of planning and redevelopment, community development has been just a very, very exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Over the years, Eden Prairie has experienced various forms of opposition. We've experienced that up on the council and I think currently maybe the school board is experiencing a little more than we are. But opposition comes in the form of both specific disagreement to some decision and sometimes a more general belief that local government is just out of touch. So, what ideas do you have in dealing with opposition in order to help facilitate finding common ground and also making government be viewed as more in touch?
I have one really good example, and I've been talking about that quite a bit. And one example is what I call in Hopkins is our, you know, kind of our Leadership Development and Growth Citizen Academy. And that is, and there are many different ways that you can engage and inform, but this is more of an in-depth, interactive program where we take 25 people a year and ask them to commit four or five evenings to getting behind the scenes of local government, Hopkins Local Government, and to make it very hands-on and interactive. So, for instance, and our next event is coming up in less than three weeks, instead of having a PowerPoint or a presentation about what government does and what government is, you're going to do it. Tonight, we're going to role-play a contentious land use issue in a neighborhood and four or five people in the room are going to be council members and some of you are going to be developers. And when they walk out that evening, time flew, they had fun, but they had a feeling for what it felt like to be a council member and deal with thinking about the city as a whole and what's best for the city as a whole as opposed to an individual specific issue. Taking that further then, okay, Rick, so there's 25 people, there's almost 20,000 people in Hopkins. Well, after six years, it's almost 200 people. After 10 years, it's 400 people and they tell everybody else. And then you have alumni events and you bring together the graduates of the class and they're your informed citizenry for budget issues. How can we go green? What should be the next city event? Help us with our strategic plan. And that's one method. We have, you know, you have a lot of community meetings, a lot of major gatherings, but I've seen and witnessed over time, folks become much more engaged in the community through that. And it is more of a commitment of time and it might be a little bit more unique. I think the blog in Eden Prairie is another excellent method of informing and getting behind the scenes of the city. This is another method of doing that, that's more hands-on, but it really does result, we feel, in a more engaged and citizenry trusts their government more because they know it more.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wickston?
Cities are very complex and complicated and things, bad things, sometimes happen. It could be a fire, it could be a tornado. How do you handle a situation where there is a sudden crisis and you are the operational leader of a city?
We've had those things. We've had, in the time that I've been in Hopkins, we've had a major fire. We've had, and this is not common in Hopkins, a homicide, which is, you know, a really big deal. In those crisis situations, we obviously have public safety and first responders that are dealing with the crisis. So, I'm able to be immediately informed of the situation. It's my role to immediately inform the council. In some cases, even if it was in the middle of the night, depending on how big the crisis is or at a different time, we have an excellent emergency operations plan where I play a role as sometimes maybe the public information officer. But I know that we have people in place, be it police or fire, and the examples that you give are public works and dealing with the issue. So, we work well as a team and we can mobilize over certain issues. And I'm usually the person in a situation like that that needs to think maybe two days ahead or three days ahead after that immediate response is because maybe the council members and the city manager and other staff will be the ones that might be getting questions about after that fire, what happens next. As opposed to, obviously, we have a great crew and actually, in the case of the fire I'm talking about, we had four other departments that responded to that fire, including Eden Prairie, Minnetonka, St. Louis Park. So, the partnerships that we have to where everyone comes together at the same time helps. But my role is working with the council and working with the department heads and thinking of the next step.
Did that answer your question, council? Councilmember? Thank you.
Council, any other questions? I have one. We spend a lot of time as council members We spend a lot of time as council members, working on strategic plans and things like that. Can you give an example of your ability to bring a strategic plan to fruition and actually function through the strategic plan?
That would be great. In Hopkins, in my six years, our strategic planning started out with general brainstorming, talking about amongst staff, council, some members of the community, besides the everyday operations of the city, besides the things that we normally try to do very well, quality, you know, city services, where else do we want to go? What do we want to do? And in my first few years in Hopkins, it was more of a list of things that we want to accomplish. When we moved to doing some survey work with the Decision Resources Survey, when we were doing more work with state-of-the-city addresses, citizen academies and other groups, we were a little bit more strategic about what does Hopkins do well? And what we learned in asking a lot of questions was that we were seen as having one of the best small-town feels in the metropolitan area, with your downtown, with the connectedness that people feel to government. Okay, what else? You can pretty much walk almost everywhere in the community. Trails and sidewalks are becoming very popular, but yet you can walk two blocks and go to the library, the grocery store, the post office, city hall, the bank, Center for the Arts, a livable, walkable community. And as I mentioned before, you have an involved citizenry. The light bulbs start going off. We need to build our strategic plan around what we do well. I just told you what our three main goals in Hopkins have been for the last four years: enhancing our small-town feel, building a livable, walkable community, and actually what one council member calls "take it to them," "take it to them" as citizen engagement. Under that, we built some strategies, and those strategies changed from year to year. The goals have remained the same. But an example of where that really works well, in a livable, walkable community, we are talking about LRT planning, we're talking about trail and sidewalk enhancement. So when the Rotary Club comes to me, I'm a member of the Rotary Club, and says, "Rick, we really want to do a community service project, a hands-on community service project. What can we do?" Well, we have a trail wayside area where we'd like to kind of build a little area where people can gather, have a water fountain, have a bathroom. Well, that fits livable, walkable community goal. Let's work on that community project. Within that same strategy, through discussion with the community, we have a great Raspberry Festival, and we have a lot of really good events, but somebody said, "If we want to build a livable, walkable community and work on our trails, we should have a city event that focuses a little bit more on movement and walking and trails." And we started a event, we've only had it two years, we're entering our third year, called Hopkins in Motion. So we work on the oasis, we have a ribbon cutting at that Rotary Trailside Oasis, deering Hopkins in Motion, another goal that we have. Someone happens to be there from Three Rivers Park District, well, they don't happen to be there, they're invited, because it's not Three Rivers territory, talks to somebody from Blue Cross Blue Shield, who says, "We're looking for a city that's a leader or trying to be a leader in this area." And about a week later, we're featured in a video with some businesses downtown, or Depot Coffee House and the city, and trying to build a livable, walkable community. And those just happen to be items that we had in a strategic plan. So when you're out, when you're talking to different groups, you're engaging, you've got an idea, it makes life easy for me. I love going to the Business and Civic Group, the Rotary Group, and work off that plan. And obviously, this is all in an environment, a tough economic environment.
Right.
So we understand that when we're building that plan, we get pushback. Well, how are we going to do that in an economic environment? Well, what I just explained to you, we can do without spending a lot of dollars. We can use Rotary grant dollars, we can use other types of funding, and it really is about communication and working together and doesn't necessarily have to be driven by cost. The last thing I'll say, Mayor, and I know this is probably way over and Greg hasn't interrupted yet, I'm sorry, is the next step is probably, in the tough economic environment we're in, is before I talked about, let's use some survey data and information like that to drive our strategic plan. I think this time, we're going to also use it to build on that, but talk about the budget climate, the economic climate. Where do we need to focus our services and put our dollars? Because the environment we're in now is a lot different than four years ago.
Councilmember Case.
Yeah, you just made me think, and you made me excited about Hopkins there, so I'm impressed. But I just, you made me curious too, in your early opinion of us as Eden Prairie, what do you think are the three things that we do well?
The three things that you do well?
You mentioned three for Hopkins, so just pick three out, and what would you come into Eden Prairie and say, "This is you, let's build on this."
I think that the, I think that the parks and recreation services are the best in the metropolitan area. I think the, and I mean, this might be tough, I don't know how I would fit this in a goal, but I think from what I know and who I talk to, the city staff here are some of the best in the metropolitan area, so that's probably too general. And I also think, again, that the city is, I don't know, it might not be "take it to them" or civic engagement, but I think the city does a good job of communicating and is on the leading edge, whether it be technology or whatnot, in terms of communication.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I was just going to say that, that that's, I have to actually work here.
And I put you on the spot, but that's why you're here, we're doing that.
No, that's why I'm here.
But you handled that well, but I realize it's an early perception of us, so that's really interesting, so thank you.
That's kind of what, top of the head.
Okay. Thank you. Before we give you a chance to do your presentation.
Excuse me, Mayor, I think Brad.
Or question.
Councilmember Aho has another question, so.
I just, more impromptu.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light there.
That's right.
Thank you.
Usually, we all get along and have pretty, pretty close to the same ideas of what we want to do for the city, but there are occasions when council members have, you know, disagreement on issues, and sometimes the council is split, and we don't necessarily have the same vision for a particular item that we're working on. How do you deal with differing opinions on the council and give, maybe give us an example of how you've had to deal with that in the past?
That happens quite frequently, and I've been lucky, in the 15 years that I've been a city manager, that I've had councils that, and these are two different things, that work together very well and function very well as a team. And I think I had the question about, you know, very difficult council members are very difficult people in those situations, and I can say that I have not dealt with anything to a major degree. That being said, definitely there are situations where there are disagreement on issues, and it's my job to bring as much information as possible and to draw out a consensus from the group that may, in the beginning, there could be two very different ideas, maybe three, maybe four, but I've been, I think I've been able to draw out one way to go about something. And again, there may be, in certain circumstances, a three-to-two vote, a four-to-one vote, but we do enough team-building and there's enough trust where I've been to where someone can walk away and say, "I just disagree with that," and I'll give an example, but yet, you know, we're able to work together. And an example is, right now, we're dealing with a development project, a redevelopment project in Hopkins, and we have, we're down to two developers, and it's a very hard decision because the developers offer different choices in terms of, one, maybe having more creative ability to do certain things around TOD and LRT development, at least that was what their proposal presented. I'm not saying the other doesn't, but their proposal had a lot of really good ideas in terms of transit-oriented development. And the other had the ability to immediately finance it. So we're dealing right now with a situation about what, which direction do we head? And quite frankly, the way we're dealing with it is taking our time and trying to get the best option. And it may, it may in the end be two developers that both work on the site. Maybe it doesn't, but that's a difficult conversation that we're having right now.
Anything else? Okay. Before we go on to your presentation about why you think you're the best for the job, do you have any questions for us?
I do, I do. From watching a previous meeting, I was able to get somewhat of an idea of what individually each council member may see as probably, you know, a main priority in a year, two years ahead. But maybe I'd ask you that again, or ask you to follow up, maybe that's, you've got more information on that. So I'd like to know maybe what each of you thinks would be the one or two really important issues in Eden Prairie, and maybe more specifically, one in which a city manager is going to work with the council and the staff on immediately.
Okay. All right, I'll go first. You want to hear from each of us?
Yes.
One of the things that I have made a pledge to work on this year is reinforcing the positive message about Eden Prairie. There's been some bad press around Eden Prairie in the last year, which is odd, because it's also been balanced out by this number-one city designation, and also wonderful results from our Decision Resources citizen survey. But oftentimes, bad press kind of is the stuff that people remember, and so I'm working on initiatives to kind of counter some of that. Do you want to go next?
Yeah, sure. I think we might have talked about this a little bit before, but the thing that I'm really committed to this year, actually, and in future years, is the way that we can continue to maintain a high level of our services and all that we are, and do that in a way that is very efficient, not that we aren't, we do have a great deal of efficiencies here, but in a very creative, innovative way, that is the most efficient way that we can be, and it's what our residents, I think, are asking us to do. So to think differently about the way we do our work, look at other best examples that are out there, and try them on, see if they'll work for us. That's what I'm interested in this year.
Councilmember Aho.
I would agree with Sherri's assessment too. I think efficiency is going to be key. I think, you know, trying to maintain, maintain our level of services, and I think really reevaluating our services and looking and saying, you know, what do our citizens expect of our services? Maybe some, they're willing to spend more to get better services, and other areas, they might say, "We don't even want that service, you know, at the level you're providing it now, and so we'd be willing to spend less on that." And so I think it's important for us to make sure that we level-set our service levels for people. I think along with that, I think it's going to be very critical for us to look at making sure all of our projects, all of our different goals are sustainable. So to make sure that, you know, if there's something that's coming up in the future, making sure that we are planning well in advance of any expenditures that are going to be required for capital improvements, all those kinds of things, and really making sure that, you know, we're not leaving a future council and a future city in a place where they're going to get caught with a surprise. And so I think that's going to be critical. And I think, one last thing I'll add to that, and that's water quality. I think this year, I'd like to see us again really focus on water quality, and that did come up with our Decision Resources Survey, that there was some concern about water quality, and I think that's important for us to focus on always.
Okay. Councilmember Case.
First thing that comes to mind is budget, and then budget, and I agree with Sherri and Brad, budget within the context of keeping our service level and quality of life high. So for me, one emphasis on how to do that is, as you said, communicate, 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 but I think there's a piece underlying that, and that's educate, educate, educate. And I just think people really need to understand what the options are and what the alternatives are, and I think that's, you know, maybe it's going out in the community again like we used to years ago, and having council meetings, reaching out to people. I just don't think you can communicate too much, you can't reach out too much, you just can't say it again and again. So I really want to emphasize this year, as we go through this process, of looking at everything we do, and as Brad says, looking at some things that may be increasing our service level and looking at others in decreasing, really engaging people in our community so they feel part of whatever we end up, because no one's ever really always happy. If you don't have kids in hockey, you don't care about cutting the hockey, right? If you do, you know? And so that's that education piece again, and letting people know that what we do as a city is very widespread and in-depth, and we try to do the best for as many people as we can, and that's why we're a number-one city, but that's a complicated decision-making process.
Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I'm committed to keeping the service levels high. I also want to see what we can do for innovation in green technology to keep the city moving, you know, forward, both has budgetary implications and some long-term development. Plus, I'm also a little bit concerned about some of the image questions that Nancy, and I want to make sure that all elements of the community feel like they're involved positively in the community and, you know, that people have the opportunities to have their various voices heard and be involved in the city. And I think we probably do need to be doing a little bit of that right now.
Any other questions, or do you want to go to your presentation?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I'm ready, and my presentation is just being here.
Okay. All right. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I guess a question that I'm responding to, or my presentation is based on why I would be uniquely qualified to be the best candidate, the best city manager for the city of Eden Prairie. And I think how I'd like to answer that would be in three pieces. One would be my background and experience. The second would be my strengths or what I feel my skill sets are. And the third thing would be how that fits, what fit that would be with the city of Eden Prairie. And some of the earlier questions allude to a lot of this, so it makes it easier in the presentation, that as I said, I've worked in three communities as city manager for the last 15 years. And the beginning of that career, the first two communities, Hector and Lauderdale in Minnesota, were small communities. And that case, coming straight out of college and then graduate school, I had to hit the ground running. And not only did I have to hit the ground running, I got to be involved in all, each and every operation of the city. When someone came into City Hall, they wanted to see the city manager, me, city planner, me, city economic development director, me, city deputy clerk, me, nothing to do with police or fire necessarily, but I worked closely with them. And you really got to learn and be involved and be a part of almost every issue. And again, in a really small community that had a downtown, its own cemetery, its own airport, its own water plant, wastewater treatment plant, again, you're not, at one moment, you're working on preparing the city budget, which would have been close to $1 million, I think, at that time, creating a first-ever capital improvement plan, and writing a first-ever personnel policy. You're selling garbage bags and you're selling cemetery plots. That's part, maybe that goes back, Councilmember Nelson, to why I love doing this, because when I started doing it, I really enjoyed that. And that continued into a metropolitan area community, Lauderdale, where again, it had a really good small-town feel, but a lot of urban issues and a lot of redevelopment and a lot of engagement of residents. I talked about the difficult issue of organized waste collection and redevelopment and highway redevelopment. And it got to a point then where I was able to spend the last six years in Hopkins. And in that case, as I said to a colleague of mine, "What is it like not to have to write each and every council report?" And she said, "You have to worry about everybody else's council report." And I said, "That's good," because I feel now I can use a lot of those leadership skills, communication skills, motivation skills, understand what it's like to deal with almost each and every issue that a municipality has, but it's more about developing other people and working with them and how you do that, and building a team, which I think leads to the second point, which would be probably my strengths and skill set. And I say strengths, because I'm a really strong believer in focusing on your strengths and building on your strengths. At Hopkins, we spent a lot of time in the last few years trying to put people in positions where to work to their strengths and where they can succeed. And I feel strongly that you don't do a good job, you don't do well unless you're working in an area that you are good at and you enjoy doing. That being said, we all have to do things that are part of the job, but let's focus on putting people in positions where they work to their strengths, you, every day you wake up, you want to come to work and you want to enjoy coming to work, you want to work with people, you want to be engaged. And so I try to use my communication skills, what I think would be persuasion skills, to do that, and I think that works really well. And also, in the environment that we're in now, it's a very difficult economic environment. And I think we have a lot of conversations, and I didn't talk a whole lot about budget, but in our city, we had to cut our budget, I believe that was in 2010, and we had to do a lot of it last minute, and in 2011, we had to set a pretty flat budget. And we're going to have some And we're going to have some difficult conversations going forward. But having difficult conversations with a positive attitude and a positive vein really makes it a lot easier. So it's not, I do see the glass is half-full, but yet I'm a realist for what can happen, and I'm able to convene the conversation. And again, I think some of my examples talked about engagement with employees, and engagement with residents, and team-building, and working with groups, organizations, and partnering with a lot of different agencies and groups. I'm very active in my professional, own professional development. I cooperate and work with and learn with and talk to most city managers in the area and all city managers around me, and elected officials at other levels of government and other agencies, because you're only as good as the people that you work with and the people that you can bring to the table. You can't isolate yourself, that being as an individual, that being as a city. So that's really important. I think that's something that I've focused on my entire career, and again, in all different types of environments. Which then leads to the fit for the city of Eden Prairie. I said earlier, why Eden Prairie? I've been asked that, because I really do enjoy my job and where I work. And it is difficult for me to even think about leaving where I work, and there's only a few places that I would consider doing that. But when I have a discussion with, you know, people involved in Eden Prairie, and how the community might be a fit for me, I see that as a positive thing. The other thing that I probably could only answer, after having been through the interview process, is I see a lot in Hopkins and other places where I've worked that I see Eden Prairie, and that is whoever you talk to, if it's a council member, if it's a city employee, if it's a person on a community panel, I think I met 24 of those people, they have a kind of a sparkle in their eye or a passion for their community, and they're proud to be a part of their community, and they get excited when they talk about, you know, this particular redevelopment project or this particular issue. And I have that where I work now, and I've had that where I've been, and at least the last month, I've seen that same, that enthusiasm, that pride, that positive energy, for the most part, in Eden Prairie, and I think that I could be a good fit for that. So I would appreciate when you make your consideration, that you would consider me for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, for applying for the position. Greg, do you have?
I just had one quick follow-up question, candidate Gatchell. If you were offered the position here, would you consider joining the Eden Prairie Rotary Club? And the morning one in particular, because that's my club.
I've been, I've been getting a lot of grief from the Hopkins Rotary Club already. There have been several parts of Rotary meetings where I've been the subject of the meeting, and I actually have gotten to know a few Eden Prairie Rotary Club members over the years, not recently. So yes, the answer is yes.
That's good. Scott Neal was a very active member of our club, and we are very sorry to have him leave. So we would be looking for whoever takes this position.
Would that be the noon club or the morning club?
The morning club, the morning club, yes. Let's be perfectly clear about that.
Not too early, though.
Not too early.
Seven thirty.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go get the other candidate, and we'll let you know. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that question again. I liked the way Brad asked that question. I also liked the information I got off of mine, which is what I really wanted to know. I did, I did.
So it's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, you think it's good. Nancy, you might as well have him rest for a second since Brad isn't back. And Ron just vanished. Oh, there he is.
Do you have water, or would you like some water? You're good? Oh, thank you.
That third question again, will you?
I had a mayor once that called me Schroder-Schrader, because he figured he was.
I know Ryan Schneider, and I know Ryan Schrader, so it's really confusing. We're going to go through some questions that councilmembers have, and then we're going to give you an opportunity to ask us questions, and then hear your presentation on why you think that you are the candidate for us. So do you want to say anything to get started, Greg?
Yes, I wanted to thank you for being here today, Ryan, and if you happen to get off point, I do, I will interject and ask you to give a specific example, so please try to give as many examples as you can, specifically to the council of your experiences. We know you're very smart, you've, both candidates tested very high on their assessment tests in the top 7% of all government officials, so I do want to make that known, that both candidates, we know you're very smart, but we want to know your experiences. So that's what the council wants to hear today, and the citizens in the council chambers and the citizens at home want to hear, too, so. Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you for applying for the position, and thank you for coming out on this cold night for this final interview. I want to ask you why you want to be the next Eden Prairie City Manager. I know you're going to be telling us why you think you'd be the best, but I want to know what you see in terms of your career development as the reason that you'd want to come here. And then also, because you're coming from the other side of the Twin Cities area, you're going to be coming into the western suburban area with a whole different set of players in terms of local elected officials and city managers from other cities and all, how are you going to build those relationships and get vested into the community?
Okay. Well, initially, I should state on the, you know, why, why me, why here. Initially, I'd say, you know, my current position at the city of Cottage Grove, I'm enjoying. I've been blessed in working with good city councils. I have an excellent city staff.
Candidate, could you speak up just a little bit, just try to, Nancy, we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you.
Okay.
There must be some noise in the background with our ventilation system.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. I would say that, you know, I am enjoying where I'm at. There are very few cities who would draw my focus, or that would draw my focus away from the citizens of Cottage Grove. I would say that the city of Eden Prairie is absolutely at the top of the list of those cities. You have a beautiful community, you have a well-run, well-managed organization. I can absolutely state that the staff, whom I've spent time with, are hot-notch, absolutely top-notch. I believe you folks, as the city council, provide strong leadership to the organization, and the opportunities and challenges that you're facing near-term and maybe long-term are those that I find exciting, whether that's development, redevelopment, transportation, transit, funding and financial issues. I've got a strong background in all of those areas, and I'm really looking forward to taking those on here, and would be absolutely thrilled to help you in accomplishing whatever goals you want to accomplish as an organization. In response to your second question, west side of the metro versus east, well, prior to being on the east side of the metro, I was on the west side of the metro, a little northwest, prior to being at Cottage Grove, I worked for the city of Ramsey, which is on the northwest side, also worked for the city of Robinsdale, you know, inner ring, but west side, northwest side, and also out in Rockford, which is west Hennepin in Wright County. In developing relationships, I think I'm good at that. I, you know, I pay attention to my peer groups, I tap those folks, you know, early and often, if there's something that I think they can assist with. And it's true, I don't know as many of the players over here right now as perhaps some other folks do, but I don't think I'd have any difficulty at all in reattaching to those folks and recreating the relationships.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho?
Okay, Ryan. Ryan, tell us about how you've mentored an employee who worked for you who was underperforming. What did you do and what was your process, and what was the outcome for someone who was an over, and maybe for someone who was an overachiever?
Okay. Well, on the underperforming side, I would say, rather than, you know, kind of focusing on those pieces of the employee performance that perhaps weren't relative strengths, I've gone instead to the strength side. I've had an individual that wasn't particularly strong on project management, and that was his job at the time, but he was strong in other areas. In his case, the biggest one was marketing. So I moved him into marketing and picked up the slack, in that case, myself, on the project management side. Did you ask also Brad a question about somebody exceeding performance levels?
Right, and then maybe someone who is an over, maybe not exceeding, but an overachiever.
Nothing wrong with an overachiever.
How about if they take on too much and can't accomplish it, or they don't, yeah, is where we're going with that question.
Sure. Well, I think my role is, as a city manager, is to help people find success in either their position or the projects that they manage, and if that means allocating additional resources to help them do that, I've done that. I'm thinking of one, I currently have somebody who's achieving a level of success that I'd never really imagined that she'd be capable of, and she continually surprises me. But I'm there to assist her in accomplishing whatever, and so in a couple of projects that she's running, I'm offering an opportunity, well, can I take that on with you? Can I help you with that? And on occasion, she's needed that, and, you know, I think it's been helpful to her. But, boy, it's been fun to have her there.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Nelson?
When discussing complex topics with people, how often do they have difficulty understanding where your train of thought is going, and how do you know if they've lost track of your meaning, and how do you get them back on the same page in understanding what's going on?
Well, I know when they've, when I've kind of lost them, when their eyes glaze over, I guess. You know, I try to interject humor a little bit, try to keep that, you know, down to, you know, I don't want to pretend to be a stand-up comic or anything, but I think humor oftentimes will kind of allow you to readjust. And so if we're working through an issue, in fact, I had one last night with an individual who frankly isn't satisfied with our performance on an issue, and was, you know, upset about it. But in, you know, just hearing her out, letting her explain what her issues are, and then responding respectfully to those, you know, I can generally bring people back.
All right. Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Well, the only thing is, is the discussing, you know, very complex subjects. Do people usually be able to, you know, take in all the information you're giving them, or are you able to break it down, or do you find yourself often having to break it down? Or, you know, how well do you deal with those complex issues in making sure people know where you're going and why?
Sure. Well, certainly, it's tough. I think I'm able to do it successfully. One that we're dealing with right now relates to contamination issues, talking about, you know, micrograms per liter of contaminants and nanograms per liter of contaminants and things like that. So I generally try to break things like that down into examples that people can grasp. I don't know what a nanogram per liter looks like, I wouldn't expect anybody else to either, and so, you know, in those sorts of examples, I've used things like, well, that'd be like filling a room this size with water and identifying one molecule within that room, that sort of example. And if we can put things in kind of real-world, real-experience sort of terms, I think that's helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Case?
Hi, Ryan.
Hi.
Now that you've had a chance to get a little bit more familiar, both with Eden Prairie as a city and our government in specific, are there any ideas that you're excited about bringing into the job that would improve our ability to deliver services here in Eden Prairie?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, one is, what I've been thinking about from the get-go, in order to hit the ground running, one thing that I'd like to do is meet with staff, actually, I would say any staff who's interested in doing it, and talking about what they think, you know, is right, what's wrong, what maybe could be improved or changed. I'm doing that currently at Cottage Grove, did it a few years ago, I'm revisiting it now. I think the same sort of thing could happen here. Another thing that I don't know if you're currently doing, but if you don't have strategy meetings with leadership team folks beyond the department heads, that would be something that I would want to take advantage of and create that.
Council, did you have something else? Councilmember Wilkstrom?
Yep. I am wondering what kind of experiences you have had involving multiple projects at the same time, and then how do you prefer to cope with the stress of multiple projects? How do you handle it?
Well, I'll give you the flip answer first. I do plumbing repair, and I may have mentioned that in an earlier conversation, but, you know, I find that if you do plumbing repair, everything else seems easy. And I frankly do more of that than I want to do, but handling multiple tasks, you know, I'm kind of a, sort of a developer type, you know, by heart, so I'm used to doing multiple tasks at the same time. If I was doing a thing for a day and then moving on to another thing the next day, I would be really, really bored. As far as, you know, kind of mechanisms that I use to kind of keep me on task or keep me organized, frankly, I rely on other folks to help me keep myself organized.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, councilmember?
Just the...
Maybe you want to redirect?
Yeah, I just...
There's more there.
How do you cope with the stress of it? I mean, what do you do with, how do you handle stress? I mean, it's a complicated job, Ryan, you know. There's lots of moving parts to it.
I can tell you, you know, beyond the, you know, joking about plumbing repair, which is real, I don't fluster very easily, and that's intrinsic, I suppose. You know, I don't have a large pile of talents, but that's one. I, you know, I probably don't have real high highs, I don't have real low lows. I just kind of keep on keeping on, and it works.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I know from my previous discussion with you that Cottage Grove has been involved in some redevelopment, and I'm curious about whether or not you can tell us about a recent redevelopment experience where you had to choose between being assertive and being really diplomatic with the developer, and what were the results?
Choose between being assertive and diplomatic? Hmm. Well, I can tell you that right now, we have an ongoing discussion with... Well, I can tell you that right now, we have an ongoing discussion with a developer who is in default of his development agreement. So, the, the stage is that he was going to provide a certain amount of development in a redevelopment project came short. So, we informed him that he was in default of the agreement. And basically, what the position that put him in is our financial obligation to him, which was significant. It's a couple million dollar infusion of cash from the community into his project. We could walk away from that if we chose to. Now, we might end up litigating, you know, if we did that. So, what we chose to do, instead of just walk away as we were legally able to do, is we negotiated, you know, kind of a reasonable result based upon the amount of development that he did, in fact, was, was able to create, instead of what he was obligated to create.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Aho.
Okay, Ryan. Why don't you tell us about an experience you've had in which you successfully motivated someone to become more involved with the team? And what specifically did you do to accomplish that goal?
Okay. We currently are in the throes of designing the new Public Safety City Hall project, and we've encouraged folks to volunteer to be on various committees related to that project. In fact, we have about 50 subcommittee members from within staff. And we've appointed chairpersons to these various committees, and some are, you know, related to site, and some are related to furnishings and things like that. I selected or asked for an individual to volunteer, kind of volunteered her, to run our communications on the project, and she had absolutely, absolute fear of, of running the communications because she hadn't done it before, didn't know anything about construction, felt that she needed to know something about construction in order to market it. And I, you know, I worked with her to support her, to demonstrate to her that she had what it took to lead the communications. And I wasn't appointing her or asking her to volunteer for the position for any reason other than I knew she could do it. And she's done an excellent job. And I've been there to support her through the entire thing so far, and she knows I'm there.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
What aspect of a city manager is it for you that's, it's really fun? Every, every job is more than just bringing home a paycheck. So what is it fun for you? And also, what aspect of city services or departments is closest to your own interests? And please be specific.
Which departments? Okay, well, first of all, on the fun side, I love creating things, just absolutely love creating things. Whether that's improvements in the parks, development, redevelopment, new systems, processes, programs, absolutely love it. As far as what department is closest to my heart? You're expecting finance, aren't you?[811.66][811.66](Laughter). Nope, nope. It's really probably parks and, and public works. You know, to me, the, the part of the organization that the community sees is parks and public works. You know, us folks back in the back room, you know, you know, kind of writing checks and doing balance sheets, nobody knows it for their, nobody cares it for their. They just want to know things are running well, but they also want to see improvements to the community that they see as a benefit to them. So I'd say it's parks and public works.
Thank you. Councilmember Case.
Eden Prairie's had various levels of discontent and opposition to government decisions over the years, like, like all cities. And opposition can come in the form of both specific disagreement to some decision or sometimes a more general belief that government is just playing out of touch. So what ideas do you have in dealing with opposition in order to help facilitate finding common ground and making government be viewed as being more in touch?
Sure. Well, initially, communication, you know, obviously. I, you know, it seems to me that, you know, we can't communicate enough. And, you know, if you have 10 ways to communicate, you probably should be doing 12. If you had 12, you should probably do 15. But also, patience and respect in conversations. You know, what I, what I try to think of is, or keep at front of mind, is that anybody I'm talking to could be my boss at the next election. And so long as I keep that in mind, it helps me be respectful in every conversation, and I, I think just that, just the, the aspect of listening, listening carefully, listening respectfully, will get you at least half of the way home.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yep. As the operations leader of a city, how do you involve your staff in the daily decision-making for which you are responsible?
Daily decision-making, well, initially, I would say that I meet with my direct reports in an ad hoc fashion, probably daily, probably daily, or at least close to that. On decision-making, while at the end of the day, if there's a need for a decision and nobody stepped up, yeah, I'll make it. But I, I like to think that I have a collaborative style where I include folks in at least the conversation, looking for ideas and input, and trying to tell me when my ideas aren't all that thoughtful. I, I sometimes have commented to people that I have, you know, 100 ideas in a, in a week. Probably one of them's good. I'm not sure which one it is. And so I need their help to tell me. And so I, you know, I kind of live my life that way. I believe that at the end of the day, like I said, that if a decision needs to be made, I'm, I'm going to make it. But I would rather have the buy-in from folks that I work with, if that's possible.
If I may redirect, how do you hold your staff accountable to decisions that they need to make, Ryan? Obviously, a city manager can't make all the decisions. You would be a bottleneck to the city, and a city as complex and dynamic as Eden Prairie would really, that would, that would suffer. But how would you hold your, your staff accountable, particularly your, your department heads, to decisions that they need to make?
Sure. Well, from a broad umbrella sort of perspective, we, you know, we have, as I think I've talked about, we have significant layers of performance metrics, performance measures, and, and through the, you know, the kind of performance measure sort of, or performance evaluation process, that that's all addressed directly. On the more day-to-day level, I keep in touch and I ask questions. You know, most of, you know, I let, I let departments run their show, but at the same time, I try to ask them the hard questions so that whatever it is that they are doing in, in answering my questions, they're able to, you know, develop either a justification for whatever they're doing or an understanding that perhaps they're approaching it wrong. Beyond that, I can't say that we have as developed of a performance measurement system as exists here in Eden Prairie. And I would also say that if I come here, I'm looking forward to, you know, working with that and perhaps developing it a little further with staff assistance. And if I'm not offered the opportunity here, I'm going to steal it.
Okay. I have another question for you. You've worked in several different cities, and obviously, every city, the community and city hall, all have different cultures. What type of a culture do you thrive in? And in the different cities that you've been in, do you adapt to their current culture or do you create what you thrive best in?
Well, initially, I would say I'm a little bit malleable. I, you know, I believe I have to react to whatever I walk into and certainly take my lead from the city council. So whether it's culture or, or policy direction, I'm certainly not going to, you know, walk in here and say, well, this is the way it was done, or whatever, and this is the way it's going to be done here. Absolutely not. As far as culture that I thrive in, I like creativity. I like to encourage creativity. And frankly, you know, what, what disappoints me is when I say something and people nod. You know, and I, I try to get them to forget what chair I'm sitting in and try to get them to give it back to me, you know, to, to tell me that, no, they disagree. And most of the time, you know, once, once that's clear, I don't have any problem getting that result. In fact, today, we had a meeting about this Public Safety City Hall building, you know, the design that I mentioned a bit ago. And we're kind of discussing the attributes of different sorts of front desk scenarios. And I stated strongly what, what approach I thought we should take, and various people stated strongly a differing approach, and we're not done with the discussion. But I was happy that they were able to feel comfortable disagreeing, and I, I think that's a kind of standard where, where, you know, where I work currently and what I would encourage here.
Thank you. Any other questions, council?
I've got one more.
Okay.
Ryan, most of the times, our council is pretty, pretty straightforward, and we have pretty much the same direction in mind, and, and we're all on the same page. But there are occasions when a situation arises where not all of us are of like mind and, and we have differing opinions, and sometimes it can be strongly differing opinions. How do you, how do you deal with, and give me an example of something where you've had to deal with a case like that, where, where council is, is divided on an issue?
Sure. Perhaps I'll, I'll do two of these. One, from, from the public, you know, policy decision-making at this table sort of approach, what I try to do, even if I know it's, you know, it's a 5-0 vote on something, I'll, I'll try to provide options and, you know, the pluses and minuses of all those options, rather than just say, no, we've thought about it, here's the right approach, do this. And encourage that from the staff as well. From the, the kind of the interpersonal relationship sorts of things where there might be some strife, either from a personality perspective or on an issue, I will pull individuals, individual councilmembers aside and give them my opinion and give them what my suggested approach would be.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Case.
Clearly, I don't know a lot about Cottage Grove, but it clearly has strengths as a community. That is where you're from, right? So I said that, I thought. I'm looking at your face to go, yeah. What are three things that you think Eden Prairie does well? And I realize you're fairly new to our whole process, but as you've gone through this process, what do you think we do well, three things?
From an operational perspective?
What are strengths of Eden Prairie?
Okay. Well, one, absolutely your park system and everything that relates to it, you know, park, park and rec, the community center is, is certainly a system for which I'm not familiar with a better one. You know, maybe there's a better one, but I haven't seen it. Let's see. Second, I can, I can say that your finance staff, staff is well-respected within the broader Twin Cities community. I can't give you much detail as it relates to that, but I just know that that exists. And I, I can say your, you know, elections, licensings, records, you know, kind of the city clerk functions, your individuals in those operations are considered at the top of their game.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht.
Ryan, I have a question, a follow-up question, actually, to what Mayor Nancy Tyrell-Lukens and Councilmember Brad Aho asked, and it has to do with culture and decision-making. And if, as a city manager of Eden Prairie, if you had to implement a policy or a decision the council made that was against what you thought was right or your, one of your staff members recommended, how would you go back to your team and make sure that's implemented and that they do it in a positive, proactive and upbeat manner and support the council?
Yeah, as far as what the dialogue might be, I don't...
And if you can give us an example in Cottage Grove, maybe where that's happened, where you had to implement an unpopular decision, and how did you, how did you rally the troops around that decision and keep them positive?
Okay. Well, in general terms, I think it's tone and delivery. You know, it's just simply, I would support the council decision, and that's all there is to it. As far as Cottage Grove, example of where staff made a recommendation, council went a different direction? Well, I can tell you, I, this probably isn't one you're looking for, but nothing else comes to mind at the moment. I can tell you that every budget I've presented to the Cottage Grove City Council, that's 14 budgets, none of those budgets have been cut from my recommendation when it comes to the council. So the staff presents a budget recommendation, I present a budget recommendation to the council, and the council there has not cut any expenditures from a single budget, which means that a good share of those budgets have, expenditures have been added to that. And in the, you know, the short time we've had an opportunity to get to know each other, you know that that would, you know, not, not be my favorite result, but I've, I've supported those results, and I've parlayed the discussion to the staff that, you know, I make my recommendations based on what, you know, my knowledge of the operation is. Council makes their decisions based upon their knowledge of what the community needs.
Ryan, what are you proudest about in terms of what you've done at Cottage Grove?
Proudest about? Well, I, I think it's an amalgam of things. But I would say, trying to make a, a short answer, I would say that we have made significant financial strides, but at the same time, we have made significant improvements to the community. And sometimes you have to choose one, and we've not had to.
Thank you. Any other questions? We want to give you an opportunity to ask us questions. Do you have any for us?
I, I do have two that I came with. In fact, Ron kind of made me reveal a piece of the first one, so maybe I'm going to be a little redundant. But in, in thinking about what I'm facing in Eden Prairie with you, and, and trying to think, you know, how do you take a, a city that's, you know, number one and grow out further and get to the next plateau? I'm not sure what the plateau above number one would be. But I'd be willing to, you know, hear your opinion on, you know, where we go next. You know, I'm, I'm thinking of things like what we talked about, which are, you know, how do you, how do you include staff that know the job, know the organization, know the community in, you know, decision-making and in performance metrics and things like that? So, you know, what methods do we use to, to gain information and recommendations, you know, kind of from all levels of the organization? And I'm thinking of things like, you know, maybe do, oh, you know, like a good-to-great process, which, you know, is trying to, you know, try to figure out, you know, what, what you're good at, what you're not good at, things like that. So maybe you do something like that, or maybe have leadership's team strategy processes, or maybe you include, you know, external stakeholders in maybe focus groups or something like a citizens academy or something like that. What I'd be interested in knowing is what you folks have thought about, either individually as, or as a group, on how do you go from number one to something more? And, and what processes or what initiatives might you suggest that if I come in to staff and say, I think we ought to try this, this, and this, that I've thought of, but also council has thought of this and this, what would those be?
Want to take a stab at it, Ron?
Well, I...
You look like you're ready to respond.
I'll take a stab at my little piece of it.
Okay.
If you guys got a fill in them. I'm just fixating on where do we go from number one? So you, you had some other things in there, I'll let others go deeper into that. I think it gets back to keeping in contact really closely with our constituents, with our residents here in the city, that... our residents here in the city, that this perception of number one didn't just happen, you know, didn't happen overnight, didn't happen without some important insignificant tax increases and good decisions. And to stay there is complicated. And I think that gets back to this, how do we go beyond that? It's communicate, it's educate, it's make sure that people are part of this process of, in this budgetary economic, whatever we're in right now, crisis. It's very difficult to even stay, much less go beyond. And so we need to make sure that we include people in the process of helping us make good decisions on what should receive more tax dollars, what should receive less, what services should expand, what should cut. And so it, my only thought came to mind was educate. We just have to really be deeper involved in responding back and forth with our constituents and communicate them and, you know, trying to help them stay with us as we try to keep Eden Prairie number one.
I agree with Ron. I think the identity of Eden Prairie is what's very, very important and what not only defines who we are in the past, because we've got a very deep past, but also it's combined with where we want to be in the future. And one of the ways we can't be, and it's an amalgam of the past and then where we want to go. And we haven't figured that out exactly yet. You know, we're, we've got some things in play, but it changes. And keeping our fingers on the pulse of what people see that as is very important, but also how we get there and how we plan for that. We were so lucky, Ryan. We had these farmers that sat, they knew the land better than anybody, and they sat back in 1968 and they created this comprehensive guide plan that we have followed almost to the T. I don't know, 98% of it. And they were brilliant. We owe that to our residents, that we will continue a plan for the future because it's gotten us here. So that's what I think. We pull the past with us, we continue to capture what people need in the future, and we plan for where we go with that. That's the identity. I think that's how we stay on top.
Thank you.
I think those are both great comments. And just briefly, I just want to say about the staying at number one or superseding that, I'm kind of cynical. We're going to be number one for two years. And I think it has a lot to do with selling magazines. It's pretty subjective. I think we are a wonderful, wonderful city, but what means more to me than the number one money magazine rating is the kind of results that we got in that most recent city survey, city resident survey, which really show that we are stellar when it comes to the metropolitan region in delivering a lot of services and in citizen engagement and citizen satisfaction with the services that we're providing. So that's kind of the thing that I would turn to, to hope to see continued improvement in that, to detect areas that we need to work on. One of the things that came up in that report was a water quality thing that Councilmember Aho talked about. But I think, like Ron said, it comes down to communicating, 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 blogging, emailing, engaging citizens and citizen academies. We've traditionally done a fair amount of outreach as a council, trying to do town meetings. It's almost become cumbersome to do those though because expectation is that everything's going to be filmed and you move out into some location in the community and it presents great challenges to sometimes telecasting the council meeting. So they're not done as regularly as I would like, but I think communication is a really big, important part of moving us forward because we are going to have the stress of continued budget constraints with continued high expectations for service delivery.
I can give you a couple of good, what I think are good, concrete examples of what can keep us on top as number one city. Eden Prairie typically has not had a, like a center, a town center, so to speak, or a, you know, really a walkable area that you could say, you know, there's downtown Eden Prairie. There hasn't really been classically a downtown Eden Prairie in history. And I think through our, through some excellent planning, we've come together with what we call the major center area. And that major center area is really designed to be a new, a new part of, a new feature of Eden Prairie that I think is really something that residents really want to see. And I've heard a lot of feedback, a lot of people would like to see that. And I think there's a lot of businesses that would like to see it as well. And so I think one of the key things in the future now that is a very creative process and a very creative thing is to help guide that guide plan and make sure that it comes to fruition in such a way that really becomes a jewel of Eden Prairie. And I think that is kind of an exciting thing that's up and coming, and I'm really looking forward to that. And I think the other concrete example is that Southwest Transit is coming to Eden Prairie. And I think that part of that process of planning where those stops are, how that's going to integrate in in such a way that we're not going to hamper the current traffic patterns, but yet integrate it into our traffic system without causing disruption to that traffic system, but yet enhance our community. And there's a lot of development that's going to go along with that transit coming in. And we've got people already talking about doing development around that. And I think, so I think there's a lot of exciting things to look forward to in terms of really finalizing some of the very creative parts of Eden Prairie and how it develops out, even though we are quite fully developed as a, you know, as a community.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because that was sort of where I was going to. We're sort of in the middle of a lot of projects. You know, we haven't just completed everything. And it is ongoing. We've got the 2014-15 technology thing that we're sort of halfway through. Instead of the other halfway to go, we've been working with public-private partnerships with various city groups and, like you said, the transit and the town center. And I think it's keeping working on those and then starting on whatever the next step of something else is. So you've got a number of long-term projects, but we're definitely in the middle of a lot of them that people seem to be happy with, and it's bringing them to completion as well right now.
So you've got kind of long answers to your question.
No, those are good answers.
Do you have another question? Was there a second?
Well, I did. And there's going to be some overlap here. But with me as a member of your team, what would you see as your hopes and dreams for the community or the organization?
How many hours does this take?
Do you want to go ahead with that, Ron? You want to start?
Sure.
We'll do the same order.
I'll try to make it faster. I think engagement. I would hope that the city manager could really help the council facilitate connectedness and engagement with our residents. So I'll leave it at that and let others.
Our hopes and dreams? Oh, gosh. I think the thing that we really want is this sense of collaboration, this trust. Those seem simple things, but really they're so important in leadership. And the city manager is the operational leader, and we're the policy and kind of community leader. And my hopes and dreams for those two forms of leadership to merge together is really that, it's trust, it's collaboration, it's respecting each other.
Yes, my comment in terms of what you could add to the team would be using your financial expertise to help us deal with how we deliver high levels of city services at reasonable costs. That's a great challenge, and people move to Eden Prairie because of the high level of services and the great parks and the great schools and everything that we do have. So the expectations are high, and we need somebody with creativity and somebody who has a good concept of lean government to help guide us along to get to that point.
I guess I would agree with everything said. I think it's, you know, times are challenging for everyone right now. And I think, you know, it takes a good creative mind to come up with ways to be able to run an operation in a creative way that you can still accomplish the goals, keep the service levels high that people anticipate and expect, but yet do it in a very efficient manner so that, you know, we don't tax people out of the city. People want to move here, we want them to move here, but we don't want to tax the people that are here out of the city either. So it's a tough balance, but I think with a creative attitude, you can do that.
Yeah, a lot of it's been already said, and I want to make sure city manager, you know, we've got a really good management team and to keep it positive and it continuing. And a person who's willing to go out into the community, have a dialogue, enjoys going out into it and sort of keep everything pointed in, you know, the right direction, you know, with their, a little bit of their own style, but keeping things positive and high morale both inside of city hall and outside of city hall is key. It's what we've had and it's what we want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, would you like to do a presentation on why you think you are the best fit for this job?
Sure.
Thanks.
I do have a PowerPoint. I'm not sure if I-
There it is.
Oh, there it is. It's up.
All right. Well, I can't see it, but hopefully you can on your screens.
Oh, that's kind of far away. Do you want a copy of this?
No, I'm, no, I'm fine. Last time I went to the eye doctor, they told me that next time in, I'll need bifocals, and so I haven't gone in since. But we'll do, we'll do what we can here. Now, this is, as you can see, since I gave you the paper, this is a long presentation. It's about a 45-minute presentation, but I'm going to do it in six or seven minutes. I'm just going to hit the high points, and I figure, you know, if you want to know about anything that I'm not going to talk about, well, I've got all night. Initially, you know that from the business side or the finance side of the operation, my track record of success is probably unsurpassed. But what PowerPoint here is hopefully demonstrating is that I bring so much more to the table than that. I easily fall into this category of, you know, this finance guy. But as I responded to the one question, I really have, you know, skills and abilities in other areas as well, and that's what the intent is here. For instance, you've talked a little bit about, you know, collaboration, communications, things like that. What we have here is a list of communication initiatives, for the most part, that have been developed within just the past few years. The one that I probably want to highlight is something we call Third Thursday, which is, I think, the top of the list there. What that is, it's a monthly, all-staff meeting. The leadership of those meetings rotate by departments. So one month, the police department might manage it, lead it. Next month, public works, next month, finance, and so on and so forth. The goal is to ensure that the balance of the organization outside of whatever department is leading this understands what the department's trying to accomplish, what their goals are, what their strategies are, what their outcomes are, and maybe a little bit about just what they're working on in that particular day. One of the earliest ones that we did, and we've been doing this for about three years, was the police department. And they did kind of a demonstration of munitions and things like that. And as part of that, they asked for somebody to volunteer to be on the business end of a taser. And they convinced my HR coordinator, Joe Fishbach, to volunteer for that activity. And I think we had two takeaways from that demonstration. One was that probably everybody in the room enjoyed that demonstration, but perhaps one. And second, that Joe learned a valuable lesson and he probably won't volunteer for that sort of thing again. Community outcomes is the next one. And again, I want to talk through all of these. What I will say is kind of the theme of this is when I arrived at Cottage Grove and also before that, when I arrived at the city of Ramsey, so that represents about 20 years of experience, in both communities, what I found relative to the park systems is one that, in both places, that kind of had fallen into a state of malaise. There hadn't been a great deal of expenditure in either areas. And in fact, in Ramsey, I used to joke a bit that you knew you'd come upon part of the park system when way off in the distance, in the middle of what we called back then a swamp, was a swing set that was part of our park system. And it really was at that level of development. And through conversation with the city councils, community, staff, in both places, we were able to take those park systems from that level of malaise to one that now in both communities are sources of pride in both Ramsey and in Cottage Grove. Development outcomes, I think you know that from a development and redevelopment perspective, I've got a strong track record of success. But what I want to draw your attention to is beyond that, I also have a length of experience in transportation and transit issues. Initially, back in 1985, when Hennepin County was initially providing for rail alignments for future commuter and light rail development, I was involved in those discussions when I worked for the city of Robinsdale. When I was at the city of Ramsey, I was involved in the creation of the North Star Rail Corridor. Didn't get to see its implementation except for, from afar, but I was heavily involved in that. Coming down to Cottage Grove, I was involved in the Red Rock Rail Corridor at the very beginning as well, and then have been since, and also in the Midwest Rail, High-Speed Rail Initiative, which now has taken a little bit of a hiccup due to the election change in Wisconsin. But still, the state is continuing with that, and I'm continuing involvement in that. In addition to that, transportation issues, I've had myriad of experiences in transportation issues, including most recently, I've been a member of the Cota Bridge Coalition from 1997 until we no longer need it now, that the 494 Bridge is finally reconstructed after eight and a half years. And also the Hastings Bridge Coalition is something that I'm active in. Tough issues, sometimes I think that I've seen every possible tough issue I can possibly realize, and of course, then another one pops up. But what I want to talk about here is really just the general tone. Each of these issues that I've listed here, when it's a specific issue, at one point or another had been declared dead on arrival, that we had reached a point of impasse because one party or the other had walked away from the table. And in every one of these, I believe that we've brought a successful conclusion to each one of them. Financial outcomes, I won't say much about this. You know, we've talked about this before. I have a strength, at least in my experience and in level of accomplishment in the financial area, and I won't belabor it. On notable initiatives, I would say that, as I mentioned before, I see myself as, you know, a creative type and one who also encourages creativity. I was recently talking to an individual who I gave as a reference, and Greg had talked to her, and she just had called to let me know that the conversation had occurred. And she reminded me of something I had long since forgotten, which was I kind of have a tendency to come up with ideas, and when I have it, I spot it out. And one of the comments that she made to me was, reminded me of a time when I walked into her office and said, hey, I've got this thought, I think this is an idea we ought to consider. Her response was, you know, I still haven't fully digested the last two ideas. And, you know, I do tend to get excited about, hey, there's a better way to do this. An example is back in the early 1990s, before geothermal was considered a reliable HVAC system, heating source in Minnesota, I built a building for our police department with geothermal heat. And of course, we were a little anxious, didn't know if it would work, but the payback was a year and a half. So I, you know, I think it worked. And in this police building that the city of Cottage Grove is talking about building, we're saying that we're going to put geothermal into that as well. On my reputation and competencies, what I'd suggest is that both externally and internally, I believe I'm respected as an individual with high standards, high integrity, and ethics. I believe I can empathize well with people in planning, development, HVAC- in planning, development, HR, finance, and areas like that because I've done the work. I've carried case loads in those areas. I've always worked closely with police chiefs and finance chiefs towards accomplishment of their goals. And I certainly understand the important role of folks in public works, in part because of my long years in doing it, also in part because for a time, I served as an acting public works director and certainly gained additional appreciation through that experience. But also, I've, I've got years kind of, sort of as a weekend guy of construction experience and certainly understand the business end of a, you know, a drill or whatever. I, I kind of joke that I'm probably the only city manager that if you look in the back of his vehicle, you'll find a briefcase. And next to that, you may find a four-foot pipe wrench. And so, I do understand some of those challenges. In closing, I'd say that I am dedicated to this profession. I'm, I truly immerse myself in it and in building community. I truly enjoy what it is that I do. I have a solid track record of success in building community. I have a solid track record of success in improving operating performance. I have a collaborative, creative style and I encourage innovation. I believe that I can help you achieve whatever goals you want to achieve and I would be thrilled to be offered the opportunity to help you with that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for applying for the job and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I think the council would like to take a short recess and then reconvene and discuss. Thank you, Ryan. We will be back in touch after the council makes their decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Yeah. I have a pizza. I'm starving. My stomach's growling. Sorry.
He's chilling too. I thought it was maybe me.
Council reconvene. We've got our tough decision to make tonight. We've got two good candidates. I guess my first question for all of you is, do you feel like you have sufficient information at this point to make a decision? And if you, if you don't feel like you do, what is it that you are looking for? If you do feel like you have sufficient information, let's start a discussion of the candidates. Anybody want to hit their light and start us off? Does anybody feel like they don't have sufficient information? We've had countless interviews. Department heads and staff have given input, community members. We've had assessments done, background checks, recommendations. Councilmember, oh, Jay, did you want to speak first? I'm sorry, Jay. Greg, do you want to speak first? It says Jay here where your light was, so. It's hard running a meeting.
It's tough, Mayor. Mayor, I sympathize with you. Absolutely. I know I look like Jay, but I'm, I'm just a little bit older than, than he is. Not quite as good-looking either, but thank you. Yes, I just wanted to recap the process that we did go through. We did have countless interviews and a quick recap of the candidates. We have mountains of paper and information and actually Jay had asked me if we could summarize and I says, Jay, it'd really be kind of impossible. But in my mind and on paper today, I put together the strengths of each candidate and where they may fall. And I'd just like to recap that for the council real, very quickly. The strengths of, of each candidate are on the Profiles International Assessment, which is an internationally acclaimed assessment tool that each candidate took. The two candidates that are, that remain, and actually, all three candidates scored in the top 93 percentile of all government executives, meaning that they're in the top 7% of, of all the candidates. They're better than 93% of the people out there. So, they're intellectually very strong. Socially and interpersonal skills, Rick scored higher than, than the other two candidates. And that was an area where Ryan Schroeder was not as strong. However, they, both their references were extraordinary. And the city managers that I've talked to, including Scott Neal, all spoke very highly of Rick. He is the up-and-coming city manager in the Twin Cities. And everybody spoke highly of Ryan. But Ryan's a steady guy. He will follow what the council's lead. He is very good at accomplishing your goals and he will mold himself to what you want him to be. Rick will be, according to his references, very creative, very energetic, and very highly passionate. He'll bring more ideas to you than you maybe know what to do with, but that may not be a bad thing either. So, those are the two choices that we have. Both of them have clear records in terms of their criminal background checks, which we did. And we have the final report coming. But there's no problems in there in terms of their financial, their criminal background, department motor vehicles. So, they're both very strong. Now, we did an extensive internet check on both candidates. There's nothing on the internet that would propose a problem or bad ill will to the city of Eden Prairie or diminish their character in any way. They're both upstanding people, high integrity, which is evident by their conversation today. So, those are some of the highlights of the candidates. They both have master's degrees. They both have undergrad degrees. Ryan also has a mini-master's degree from the University of St. Thomas and does some teaching there too. So, that's something else I was able to find out. He's done some adjunct professor work there. And Rick has created a citizens' academy at Hopkins. He's very creative in terms of creating areas. Some of the things I've found on the internet on Ryan that I thought were interesting, he didn't share with you, but he created a, are you smarter than a councilmember program for giving information back and forth. And he had the councilmembers out, taking questions from the public, and the public asked questions and it was really fun and interactive. He also had another question of jeopardy and he had questions answered where this, citizens asked the, the council different questions on what was going on and they were able to answer them and have a very fun, interactive way of doing it. He gave out prizes to whoever was able to get the questions right and get as many. This, no, this was Rick. Rick did this at Hopkins. So, he, he's done some creative things to communicate and get information out to the citizens and engage the public. And I think that's one of his strengths that he brings to Eden Prairie. And both their, their staffs have, have done well. Ryan has promoted people that have gone on to become city managers, as well as the HR person I talked to is now the HR Director for Washington County. And a few of, Rick's proteges have now become city managers in other cities. And he has developed his staff. So, they both, even though they do it in a slightly different way, one's definitely more outgoing, one's a little bit more introverted and introspective, they both are good at developing their people. So, they're, they're two very good candidates, but they're two different styles too. And if, if anybody has a question that they'd like to ask me, I'd be happy to, to share any additional information if you need.
Questions for Mr. Albrecht? Kathy, is your question for him? Or did you want to-
Oh, no, just general.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, I've got to say, I've been impressed by both candidates. I feel like, you know, through the two questioning periods and listening to the citizen panels and the staff panels, that I do have enough information to probably make a decision. But I do have to say, I could be happy with either of these two candidates. They both have a little different strengths and a little different weaknesses, but they do seem to be oriented towards city services and towards doing things in a new way where they're not going to just be stuck. And they, they seem to be popular with their staff. I'd happen to know people in all three communities that, which I took the opportunity to call and say, okay, what do you think of your manager? And I must, you know, obviously, we're down to two candidates, but in both cases, people weren't happy to, in Hopkins and Cottage Grove, to lose these people. They felt that they had done a lot for their city. And were, was accused of poaching at least once. But, so I don't think we can go wrong with whichever candidate we choose, which makes me willing to choose.
Thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yes, I agree with Kathy. I think that all of us have spent many hours, both personally interviewing the candidates, reviewing and assessing all the information. And this is a big decision for the city. It's a really big decision. I think both candidates that we interviewed, well, all the candidates we interviewed, but these two in particular, are very intelligent and clearly experienced. And I think that, as Kathy said, they're respected in their own communities, which is always very important to find out. But they see Eden Prairie as a great opportunity and an option for their own personal growth and development. So, I think what we're looking for is the best fit for Eden Prairie now and into the future. And we really must choose a candidate. And I am willing, I've got a candidate in mind myself.
Councilmember Case.
Clearly, there are specific strengths that both exhibited. And I really do appreciate both putting themselves out on the line and taking the time to be involved in this whole process. And I commend them both. And I, I can see why they are very successful in their respective cities. I'm going to go ahead and say I'm leaning towards Rick Getchow and I wanted to give some reasons why and just not in any way to say that Ryan didn't exhibit many strengths. I just thought I'd spend a few moments on talking about the way what I saw as Rick's strengths. I liked his energy. I liked very much how relational he was. And I think as a very relational person myself, I see that as so critical in government. I liked the fact that he had a great understanding of cities' strengths and particularly our cities' strengths and seemed very capable of understanding our community's needs and possibilities. I was really impressed with reading through the citizens' staff focus groups and their responses on, on all three. And I think they gave us a lot of good information. And again, there were positives tremendously on all three. I particularly appreciated the staff opinions and statements on Rick. I think there are times very much when it's good to bring in someone new from the outside that can bring good, strong, new perspectives to staff. But at the same time, I really believe it's critically important that staff embrace and support and buy into the person that we would bring in because that's what leadership is. And I, I think Rick showed himself to be very respected and, and really admired in some of the statements we were reading from that staff focus group. So, based on everything I've said, and again, feeling that we had two strong candidates before us this evening, I just want to spend a few moments talking about Rick.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. I don't know what I can really add to, to that, to the conversation about both of them being very qualified. I think, I don't think we could go wrong with, with either candidate. I think both candidates are highly qualified, highly motivated, and have done a fantastic job in their, in their own respective communities. And I, I think we're very blessed to have such quality people, you know, looking to make a, make a step up and move to Eden Prairie and make that part of their, their new home. So, I think, I think we've got great choices.
I really can't add anything to that. I agree with all of the statements that you all have made. We've got two candidates that have, both have strengths. Some of their strengths are quite different. So, it kind of comes down to what style do you think you can work with and how do staff feel? And I think, Ron, you brought that up. That's important. It was very important to us when we selected Scott Neal and I think it paid off. I'm, I'm glad to, to see the comments that staff made and they're not, they're not different from what the public said. They're not different from what we've been feeling, which makes me feel a little bit more, more comfortable in making a decision between two excellent candidates. So, do you have a motion?
I was the only one that actually shared about it. You want to share a few more thoughts?
Okay. I, I will. I too was really impressed by the creativity and energy and new ideas of candidate Rick. His last name, I'm going to have to work on.
Getchow.
Thank you.
I think both candidates are highly qualified, highly motivated, and have done a fantastic job in their own respective communities, and I think we're very blessed to have such quality people, you know, looking to make a step up and move to Eden Prairie and make that part of their new home, so I think we've got great choices.
I really can't add anything to that, I agree with all of the statements that you all have made. We've got two candidates that have, both have strengths, some of their strengths are quite different, so it kind of comes down to what style do you think you can work with, and how do staff feel? And I think, Ron, you brought that up, that's important, it was very important to us when we selected Scott Neal, and I think it paid off. I'm glad to see the comments that staff made, and they're not different from what the public said, they're not different from what we've been feeling, which makes me feel a little bit more comfortable in making a decision between two excellent candidates. So?
Do you have a motion?
Why was the only one that actually shared about? Want to share a few more thoughts?
Okay, I will. I, too, was really impressed by the creativity and energy and new ideas of candidate Rick. His last name, I'm going to have to work on.
Getchow.
Thank you. Getchow. I believe he will take the city into the future with enthusiasm and really work as a team, and I think that aspect of being a team leader is really, really important in our world. I think he will also maximize the strengths of the staff, and our staff are so stellar that it can only get better, and I think he'll do that in a collaborative fashion. I do believe that the city is ready for his spirit and experience with student engagement, and I find him to be open-minded, to try new things, and I think that's where we need to go for our future. So I feel very confident in supporting him as our next city manager.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, we've got comments, I'm not going to make a motion. I must admit with Ryan, I like his budget background, and I like his public works background, and I think that is something that I feel really comfortable with coming to the community, but he's not as outgoing as we've been used to, and Rick Getchow clearly is. He clearly also has good budget strategy. I like his strategic planning, how he does that, and they're both seem to be willing to do some innovation, but there clearly was a preference in the community comments and in staff comments, and since I feel that both of them would be good, at this point, I am leaning towards Rick Getchow, just because the whole picture from the community seems to say that though they're both good, he's perhaps the better, more outgoing fit.
I guess the only thing I would add on to that is that I think Ryan has, the depth of his experience with the city, I think, is stronger and with a larger city, so I do appreciate that a great deal with Ryan. And so it would be tough to pass up on that experience and that, you know, that depth, bringing it to the city. So, but I am willing to, I'm willing to support Rick, I think Rick is a wonderful fit, and I think that's, you know, it's a hard decision, because it's not only is, do you look at experience and depth and knowledge and skill sets, you also look at how do they fit with staff, how do they fit with the community, and how do they fit with the council? And it sounds like we're clearly leaning towards Rick Getchow, and so I am certainly willing to support that as well.
Okay. Motion? Somebody?
Do you want to speak?
Well, I think I pretty much tipped my hat in my previous comments about Rick having been a candidate of choice from the community and the staff, and I'm very comfortable with that.
I would move, then, that we would appoint Rick Getchow as our new city manager.
I second that.
So, select?
Point.
I don't think we can appoint him.
Offer. Yes. I would change my motion, I would move that we would offer the position, if he so chooses to accept, the position of city manager of Eden Prairie.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
Sharon, seconded it? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to everybody that was part of this process, it's been very helpful having all of your input.